Let me know when you're ready.
We are ready.
Thanks, sir. Okay, folks, it's six o'clock. It's time to do our thing here. If I could have everybody please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good. I thank everybody for coming. For remember, our first item is approving the agenda. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at it and see what you can call. Oh, call the order first. Sorry. You skipped, you went ahead on it.
I did. Didn't either have a few this time. Sorry. Mr. Brotherton?
Here.
Andy Graham?
Here.
Lodo Johnson?
Here.
Nikki Pettit?
Here.
Joe Robinson?
Here.
Mitch Wilson?
Here.
Tyler Wilson?
Here.
Sorry.
Okay, now the first item for business is to approve the agenda. If I can get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. If there's no additions or subtractions or directions to it.
I made the motion.
Robinson made the motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Just Pettit made the second.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pettit?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Wilson, Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, public comments. We do have two speakers tonight. Can't, can't pronounce your first, I can't read your first name.
Roger.
Roger, okay. You're up first.
Right now?
Yeah. You have five minutes. As soon as you start talking, sir.
Mr. Brown?
As I said last time, I was just checking up on you, see how the remote learning was going. And it's a shot that they want the kids to take before they go back to school. And if they take, if they're taking remote learning, like, why do they have to take the shot? I mean, even if they not, it's like a sexual active shot that they trying to make the kids. Like, my, my son ain't like active like that. I know he ain't, and I ain't gonna be giving him that either. But they wanna make him take it to sign up for school. That's crazy. And it's police at the school too, right? If it open back up, well, I know it's opened up. It's police at the school too, right?
Resource officers.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is? Okay. I'm saying, cause you know, like, things is really getting crazy now, like, with these kids. I got a teenager and I kinda know, like, what's going on, like, without knowing what's going on. And like, it's getting dangerous out there. If you ain't seen it, I mean, I know you probably seen it, you probably know it, but, like, it's getting crazy. I mean, I'm not saying that it's gonna happen like that at the school or something like that, but, like, if something does happen, do y'all have something to prevent that or like, like, is there any way, like, I mean, I don't know. Y'all just got one officer there? Man, I ain't saying it like that. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like.
So, so Mr. Brown, this is how it normally works. You, you can ask all of our questions and, but, we don't, at this time, we don't answer right back. So, we're, I'm writing them down, Scott's writing them down.
Okay.
He'll call you back. If he doesn't, if you don't like that, then please call me. So, you, you ask away, but we won't interact with you during this five minute.
Okay.
I don't wanna be disrespectful to you, but that's, that's why everybody just sitting here. So, alright, so.
Just for listening.
Just, just more listening to you. You, you give us your concerns and Mr. Mr. Woods will get back to you before, uh, before it start next week.
My last question, I was wondering, like, how many trunacies was it today? I mean, that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll get back to you on all those concerns.
Okay.
Thank you. Sharon?
Hi.
Oh. Come up here and sit, please.
Okay, so anyways, my concerns are not enough racial, uh, variance in our teachers. I went to a school opening today and every teacher up there was white except for one black man. Um, I noticed that in the office, the seventeen years that I worked here, they were all white people. There is a lot of racial discrimination in our hiring practices in Rantoul City Schools as far as I'm concerned and other people that I've talked to, and I would like to see that change. I don't know what the hiring practices are or, um, exactly who applies for the job and who decides what, who gets what jobs. But to me, there's not enough diversity in our teaching and our administration of Rantoul City Schools. It seems to be very white, and I'm getting tired of it actually. Also, the hiring of a superintendent. I was, had questions about that. I'm not sure where to go, but who hires the superintendent? How many people apply for the job? Is it a lifetime job? Because I was under the impression that the superintendent or for the school board, uh, that there is hiring and firing process, and to me, it just seems like the superintendent runs the school board. And why do we have a school board to begin with if the superintendent just sits there and runs it and decides what to do? And I'm not sure if this happened or not, but I thought the previous superintendent, if you're not the new one yet, was actually the president of the school board at one time. And, um, other school boards don't act like that. Another town, he's around here. I've called plenty, and, um, they thought that was weird that the superintendents were running the school board, so. That's my concerns.
Well, well, thank you. Can you step up here, please, and write your phone number down? Cause I will, I will answer those concerns for you and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. And you have Roger's number, right, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I can get that one though.
Before you leave, just make sure you get that to Scott waiting. Okay. Yeah, you're a parent. He said he could look you up, so. Okay, thank you. That's all for public comments.
Number four is you. All right. I need, uh, Karina and Monique to come up to the table. Have a seat. Or you can just stand there. It's up to you. I think you gotta sit. So, uh, first up on, over here on the left side, I'm introducing, I mentioned I would do this at the last meeting when we were going through hiring process and, uh, Karina was approved in June, if I recall correctly. Might have been May. Monique was approved at the last meeting and has already started for it. So, this was their first day with students today. So, I asked them for some bios. Um, they wrote them really, and then I just reworded them to sound like I'm saying them, so it doesn't seem quite so awkward. Um, so I'm gonna introduce Ms. Buford first, alright? Ms. Buford was born at Rush Presbyterian Hospital on the west side of Chicago in nineteen eighty. Her mother is a Caucasian woman and her father is a black man. She moved between Chicago and Penfield throughout her childhood. She went to Penfield Elementary School, when it existed, graduated from a middle school on the south side of Chicago and then came back to Central Illinois to graduate from Armstrong Township High School in ninety-nine. She moved back to Chicago and completed her undergraduate at Chicago State University and then pursued her masters, master of arts at National Lewis University. She has two children, a daughter who is a junior in college and a son who is a senior in high school. She has a background in child development as well as behavior analysis and has been working with children of all ages for over fifteen years. One interesting fact about Monique is that she likes to say that being a biracial individual, she has seen both worlds. As she says, "I've lived in an all-white community and I've lived in an all-black community. I consider it a gift that I look at people as human beings and nothing more or nothing less. I cherish that as an individual in this world and it has made me who I am today and has helped me through this walk in life." So, Monique, thank you for coming here. Well, this is Monique, and I'd have you shake hands if you were allowed to touch people these days, so. How was your first day with kids?
It was wonderful.
Alright.
Yes, it was nice to see the kids back in the school. Like, it's just not the same. What is a school without kids? And it was just wonderful to see them and see the kindergartners and some were happy, some were scared, and I was like, oh, you know, I love the little ones. It was nice to see the students.
And right now, her home base, your home base is at Pleasant Acres?
Yes.
Um, alright. So, Karina Kansel, Karina Kansel, uh, will be working as one of our family community liaisons. She has been with RCS twenty seventeen, working as a teaching assistant at ADR. As a TA at ADR, she worked with students in the classrooms, but also helped families with registration, translations for parents, made home visits and did just about anything to help our families feel welcomed into our schools and our district. She lives here in Rantoul with her three kids, a dog named Rex, and she wrote this, and three fish. Ms. Kansel moved to Rantoul about seven years ago from Chicago, and prior to that, she lived in Puerto Rico, a beautiful island, by the way, she put in her notes. According to Ms. Kansel, I am excited and looking forward to continuing to work with our Rantoul families. So, thank you, Karina.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Welcome, welcome.
So, Karina's home base at the moment is here at District Office, um, cause she started and was here through the summer months and was helping us a lot with registration and calling a lot of families at that point, so. But, uh, how was your first day?
It was great.
She was promising I don't have to talk. Alright, any questions for Karina or Monique?
Thank you.
And you can leave the meeting now. So, alright, thanks ladies.
I was studying.
Okay, item number five is consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to look at consent agenda, and I will remind everybody that all these consent agenda items are consent agenda eligible. I know we had a question at the last meeting, but everything on that meeting was eligible, everything on this meeting is eligible. So, uh, I think I've made the long motion. If you can, if not, I will. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including personnel report as submitted with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in my statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including revocation of bills prepaid by the finance manager under Board Policy four dash fifty. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, but Mr. Wilson?
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pettit?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, she has to click through each one.
Yep. We're on item seven now.
Yeah? Oh, this is me. That's right. Uh, so we did preview this last time like we would do with, when we have a big combination of board policy changes. I shared with you what that would be. Um, I didn't get any questions from the board in the meantime. These are all just procedural things that have to be updated to reflect changes in, typically changes in law, so. Are there, if there's no questions?
Anybody have any questions on any of these policies or procedures? Okay, Hannah?
Need somebody to make the.
Okay, can we ask somebody to make a motion, please?
Can ax a move.
This Pettit with the motion?
I'll second.
Hannah with the second? We can do voice vote on this, can we?
You want, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Alright. So, the next one, and I know I, I say we wanna bring board policies for a first reading and a second reading, uh, which we just did with the previous action item. Are we on the right one?
We're on eight, Hannah.
Go back to eight, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, okay. This is a board policy revision that we noticed as we were getting ready to open school. So, we were meeting with the nurses. As a board, we voted, you voted to change the date that physicals had to be turned in to the first day of student attendance. Um, we were looking at Board Policy seven one hundred and we had not updated that change. So, what we should have done, having thought of it, um, is when we made the decision to move it to, um, the first day of student attendance, also noted at that time that it wouldn't be reflected in the policy. So, I've attached what the revised policy would be. Uh, there was also one sentence in there that didn't make any sense to any of us when we were reading it, so we're recommending taking that out, cause it doesn't fit with, um, the rest of the policy or the school code, so. What we're reading now is it's, students have to have their physicals and immunizations on record by the first day of the student's attendance, which you've already approved, so now we're just asking to update the policy piece.
Okay. Any further questions on that piece?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
Having an update on your physicals and our immunizations. When a parent turns this in one year and the school for some reasons loses it.
Yes.
And then the parent's, um, required to get this information to the school again before start of, uh, child starting. You, you know, you're punishing the parent right there, just in case a parent, and I'm using myself as an example, cause it happened to me today. I'm sitting there going, they got all that information. I gave them copies of it last year. So, I had conversation with the, um, secretary today and explained to her that all three of my kids, on September the seventeenth, they all three go in every time at the same time and get physicals and sports physicals if need be. I was told my daughter, the sixth grader, hasn't had a physical since twenty fifteen. I said, well, that's not true. You know, that's dang near kindergarten. And then the daughter that's in eighth grade, I said, how was she able to participate in athletics if she didn't have either or? So, my, my question to you and, and the board is how will we do that to keep parents to have to, you know, from having to worry about that part of it? Luckily, I was able to, I kept copies and I brought the copies in and gave them to her, and she goes, oh, I guess it does say tw- twenty fifteen. I said, well, or twenty twenty. I said, well, I gave this to you once before. Um, is there any way possible that we can figure out a way to where, you know, each year a parent might know a little bit ahead of time? Because I thought I, I already covered myself. And I'm sure some parents might feel the same way that they covered theirself, and then all of a sudden, you get a note from the school saying, well, your child cannot come back to school unless you come up with these documentations.
So, yeah, assuming that the nurses or the secretaries are doing their part right, it should work.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying.
And there's a possibility that paperwork got misplaced or something, but I do know that during the summer months, they're making phone calls to any of the kids that would be excluded from school. So, that would be only at those entry points, kindergarten and sixth grade. There's one other one, can't remember, second. Those entry points where you would be excluded. Most years, a child wouldn't be excluded from school without a physical. So, a sports physical is gonna be different.
Exactly.
So, um, but yeah, it should be, if you've turned it in, it should be on file. I know of a situation Hannah and I were working on this week. It was actually a student at the high school now, but, um, where there was, they were trying to find a copy of the physical and we were not able to locate it, but we have it showing in Skyward that we've received it and the kid would have been cleared. But finding that paper copy, um, is a concern. Why would we lose that?
Okay, I was just wondering, because of the amount of time, you're talking about twenty fifteen, it's twenty twenty-one now. You know, you're talking about a six-year period where, I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah, it should be there and.
It's good now.
It's there now, right?
Yeah, it's definitely there now.
When, when those come in, can those be scanned in and attached to the children's Skyward profile?
I can check into that, but I don't think so. Uh, and the reason is, cause the medical records are kept separate from the rest of the student record. But it's worth asking, cause we do that with other documents.
Yeah.
Yep. And that would allow the parent to see it too, typically.
Yeah.
No further questions on that? Could I have a motion to approve this policy change?
I'll make the motion.
I said.
Tyler made the motion. Lodo seconded. Can we do this one voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Seven or no?
Now, this next one would require a real, a roll call, but.
Yep.
Um, so, I am recommending, uh, secretarial clerical employees receive a salary adjustment. Um, they did have a regular salary increase this year, like other employees. Um, looking at our wage scales and with some of our new hires that we've done and some, we've had some internal transferring, say from a clerical to a secretarial. I decided after some consultation that we needed to adjust that wage scale to be competitive, um, at the entry level. So, just to clarify, we have thirteen building-based secretaries or clericals. That's who we're talking about right now. Uh, ADR has three. The elementary schools have two each, so that's eight and three. That adds up to eleven, so I feel like I'm missing some. Pre-K secretary is another one. They're all listed on the spreadsheet. Uh, it adds up to thirteen. And, uh, so a clerical is typically a lower wage sal- salary, and then each building has a secretary. They are all two-hundred-day employees, which is, um, the whole school year plus some time at the beginning and the end before the kids are there and after the kids are there. Uh, Ms. Norwood, who is the secretary at ADR, is year-round, and she also handles the secretarial role of the bilingual department. Does a lot of our purchasing for that. So, uh, what you'd see if we look at the adjusted wage scale is that we're adjusting the clerical salary to be fifteen dollars an hour as the entry point. Um, we think that puts us in a much more competitive place in the current job market. And then we made, uh, adjustments based on that movement for all of the current employees. So, overall, it's about fourteen hundred dollars per employee. We would also make that adjustment back to the start of this work year for those employees. Okay? They work very hard, so it's, uh, any questions on that?
Any questions? And I, I will just make a comment that I know personally how hard it is to find good people to work right now. And everybody, there's a first, uh, job that's wanted or hiring in every place of business you go, so. We wanna get good people, we wanna hang on to good people, so.
And as an informational point, just for the board, it's, it is typical that we will come in with different employee groups and make, uh, wage scale adjustments. We don't do them all at once. Alright, so for instance, if I recall correctly, we adjusted, uh, cooks last year was one of our groups. Uh, E, no matter what, we're gonna have to bring all of our employees up to, uh, the fifteen dollar an hour mark. I think we've got two more years. Custodians and classroom support personnel, they're, uh, collective bargaining agreement, so we cannot do wage adjustments without reopening their contracts, but secretaries, so, that's the big group, is the clericals, central office clericals, cooks are not part of an association.
Further questions, if somebody can make the motion?
I made the motion to approve the action item, I suppose, then.
Okay, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, Mitch Wilson with the second, and we'll have a roll call Hannah when you're ready.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Lodo Johnson?
Aye.
Pettit?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Alright. We ready? Wait, sorry.
Yep, it's information items.
Alright, and I do have a few in here. So, remember, you can ask questions on these. That's, we can have discussion about it. There's just no action that we're gonna be taking on these items. Uh, the first one is compensatory time off. Uh, Board Policy five three ten. Um, I anticipate I'm gonna bring an update on that policy to you at the next board meeting. Um, currently, what's in the board policy does not match what is in the, uh, Support Personnel Association Agreement. The current policy allows up to four hundred and eighty hours of accumulated compensatory time, that's comp time, uh, which is twelve, how many is that, twelve weeks' worth of work that an employee could save up and use all at once? So, that is not what anyone's actually doing, but that's the way the policy reads. So, um, we're gonna be recommending an update to that policy. Uh, I believe the adjustment will be down to, uh, an employee could accumulate forty hours. Um, and this is, uh, they can do compensatory time in lieu of overtime. So, an employee could say, I don't want overtime, I'd rather have time off. It, it is the same difference from an employer side. Overtime just means we're not losing them for any days off work, but I'll have something more detailed that's, I think it's gonna be as simple as just changing the, the hours, and then I have to consult with the attorney just to make sure we're all good on the labor laws. So, any questions on that one right now? Alright, it mostly applies to custodians. And, uh, some of our clericals will have times, like this time of the year, a lot of our buildings, they're, they're building up some comp time too.
So, why would, if it's, why would you be doing that? What, what's the benefit of changing it?
So, comp time doesn't cost us any dollars if an employee does that. If they do, so we, we have to give overtime or comp time, so the employer E can choose either. Okay? Uh, from an employer point of view, it's better to do the comp time, cause we can control our budget and it allows us to account for, say, surges in workload. Like, right now, it's incredibly busy in the buildings. So, building secretaries might be accumulating some comp time so that they can take a day off two months from then. But they could also just choose to be, uh, paid in overtime.
And you're saying before it used to be, they could do it twelve weeks at a time?
No. They, the way it's written, some employees could accumulate four hundred and eighty hours of time off, which, if I do my math right, that's twelve weeks, I think. Forty hours a week. Don't do it in your head. I'm on TV at the same time, but that's, I believe that's twelve work weeks they could accumulate again. And then we don't really have any language in there saying that, uh, when can, when do they have to use it, anything like that. So, in the association, in the bargaining groups, so the custodians, they can accumulate a, a lower number and it says they have to use it by a certain time, so that it's not carrying over year to year. We're just trying to clarify it for the folks.
And it was mainly for custodian, you said?
There's only, only hourly employees could do it. The only hourly employees that we have that would typically get overtime are custodians. They get the most because they, like, when there's a snowstorm, they're working a lot of hours, okay?
Building checks on the weekends.
Um, and then, uh, secretaries and central office clerical staff also. They're the only ones that would typically do it. Classroom assistants, TAs, their hourly work week is thirty-five hours usually. And so, for them to go over forty hours is not very likely.
I was just wondering, because if women were using that for, or men, for maternity time or paternity time?
I don't know if they could, but it's a good question. Yeah, we don't have that much of it sitting around right now. So, I'm just trying to close a loophole, I think. Alright. Uh, Jenny will answer questions on this next item, if you have any. But, uh, school districts allocated ARP funds, that's the American Rescue Plan, must develop a use of funds plan and submit it within ninety days of funds being received. School districts must also make the use of funds plan available to the public and post the plan on the district website. Note, this is a big note. This is a plan that is not set in stone. It is going to change. It's a three-year grant, but we have to start, uh, within the grant parameters saying, this is what we think we're gonna use the money for. Um, and so Jenny has a document that's attached in your board packet that shows, I would say, some of the big items that are in there. Okay? And we can change that, as long as it's within the parameters of the grant. Alright, the last one is the facilities committee. I do not remember, Mr. Graham. Uh, did we have an idea of which board members were wanting to be on the facilities committee, or?
Yes, I remember, I have it written down.
Okay.
I know I have it with me. I, I know it was Mitch Wilson and Tyler Wilson.
Aye. Alright, so we have a schedule for those. I know they're not gonna work very well for you. That's gonna be the problem. And so, um, now that I'm looking at it, so. It's three-thirty to four-thirty to accommodate the employees that are on there, so. Um, but we have the dates and the times on there, uh, and we can work Jenny and Shannon. But we have the dates and the times on there, and we can work Jenny and Shannon.
If you did it on Mondays, you wouldn't have any problems.
I don't know what day it is. Alright, so let's keep that in mind, Jenny. What date does work?
Monday.
Monday.
I know, that's, we're trying to balance what the school needs, what meetings we have in schools and such too, so. Or, okay. But we do have some dates on paper at least now for that. Alright. That's all I have on information items. Okay? So next would be board.
Board and superintendent comments. You wanna go first, do you have any other comments?
I am, my comment is this, we're on day one, we've already had one COVID case. One COVID case resulted in one sibling also being quarantined and one other student being quarantined. We anticipate ultimately the local health department will make that decision. If you remember from first semester, or in first semester, from last year, Mrs. Ramage tracked all of the COVID cases and all of the COVID data, she is still doing that with us. And so she's dealing with all the employees who are out, we have one employee out currently as a close contact. So that information's available, we don't normally just sit and talk about it. But my big concern is, is that we are going to have a lot of students identified as close contacts. I shared this in some phone calls with some board members this week. The way we are reading the close contact rules right now is that if a student is COVID positive, any kid that they sit by during breakfast or lunch is going to be considered a close contact, which we're estimating at the elementary schools being about eight kids. The one COVID case would take out eight kids. That didn't happen today, so I don't know what happened, maybe there weren't, the classroom wasn't as full, maybe the kid missed breakfast. Because we are, if you're within six feet and your mask is off, that negates the fifteen-minute rule. Yep. So again, we, that's our interpretation of it right now, it's gonna be a health department decision, so I'm really hoping we're not interpreting it right. But the question now on my mind is what happens when we start closing down classrooms? Because teachers are out, that would be the main reason where we get a large number of students out. And so I have been talking with the principals of the buildings to come up with what's our plan. This kind of goes to Mr. Brown's question, which is what, you know, what's our remote plan? For if we shut down for any period of time this year. So, and it's not clear legally what authority we have to shut down at the moment, because the executive orders and the emergency declarations last year aren't in place to cover a shutdown, so. But we had a great first day, as far as I can tell, we had some challenges at dismissals at our schools, which is normal. Buses are a headache, the intercom stopped working at one school. So, but I am concerned, I did, questions with the newspaper today, and that's what I shared too, is I just, I'm really worried that we're gonna get so many kids called close contacts that it makes it difficult. And it's not gonna be for anything we're doing wrong as a school, but really, it's just the way the rules are written right now, so. That was my board comment for tonight, it looks like we have questions.
So did the student come knowing that they were positive, or did they show symptoms and whatever measures we have in place allowed us to know that they were positive, or?
I don't have all the details, but I do believe we were able to pull that student and test that student at school. And that's one of the reasons we even knew today. Because we have those rapid tests on site, so I don't know if the student had symptoms at school or what led to the student being tested.
We gotta keep educating our parents to make sure if they have symptoms, stay home.
Yeah, I thought that was supposed to be.
This.
Just because we're supposed to.
We do have kids who just get sick at school too, so.
We keep pushing that information out there, if the kids have symptoms, stay home. Don't make it to work, because that's gonna keep everybody in as.
And I'm just grateful it only triggered one kid to be close contact.
Are we keeping tabs on the close contact thing, like are we writing down John's sitting next to Suzie and?
So I saw a very local school this week had a photo of an assembly that was posted online with all these kids just sitting everywhere. We're not doing that. If you're going to lunch, you have an assigned seat, we know where you're supposed to be. In every classroom, you have an assigned seat. So at this school, the principal was able to go in and just say to the teacher, the question is more about masks, not distance when we go in. Which kids were there, and the teachers do know. So yeah, I've seen enough stuff posted on social media, it'd be like, oh, they're not, how are they gonna know who's who, so.
And we're doing that at every school?
I do not know if we have assigned seats at lunch at the junior high. I believe we do, I just have, don't, I have not had that conversation with Ms. Jacobs. They usually do anyway, at the junior high, in a norm year, so.
I've heard you guys are doing fairly decent with the social distancing at lunch anyways, at least for my two kids that go here. You know, I guess you're having lunch in more than one area, so it gives you an opportunity to keep the kids spread out.
And most of the elementary schools are doing it, they have some extra classrooms set up, I believe, for lunches. The hard part is breakfast, because we do breakfast in the classroom and in some of our elementary classrooms. Just staying at three feet is a challenge, so getting to six feet is not practical.
Anybody else have any comments?
I got one. In regards to softball and baseball, why are we playing at the sports complex? We can walk right out our door, four hundred yards, and they're right there. Now, I understand Thursday happens, last Thursday, we get ten inches of rain, you can't play on that field. But how hard is it to call athletic director Andy at, you know, baseball's playing Danville-Northridge today, and say, hey, go through town, go to the sports complex? Call umpires, go to the sports complex. You just said the buses were a headache today with dismissal. Ader baseball, which they were leading nine to two the last update I got, had to be bussed from Ader to the sports complex when they could have walked out the building and went right over there. How much is that costing us extra? To bus the kids out there, and the bus driver has to sit there the entire game? Because they have to bring the kids back here. So we're paying a bus driver to sit there. My son is on the baseball team and the big issue this morning was, what are they gonna do with their bags? Since the locker rooms are not open. Hunter luckily has made baseball team since sixth grade, he has not had a sports locker here. So being around the green shed is out at the baseball field, and Diamond Three has a storage room at it. Last night's a little different because they had a game, but if last night would have been practice, all the boys and girls could have thrown their stuff in the shed or the storage room at the field, and we wouldn't have had to deal with finding a room for them today to place them. And then they walk out and it's right there. Right now, there's only four baseball, four boys baseball, I'm not sure on the softball. Oh, how many are out there? But we're worried about COVID and we're slamming these kids into a bus that an average bus has two hundred and ninety-five square feet. Yes, the windows are down, yes, they're in masks, but you just said one person takes out eight-ish. That's a baseball team. That's your, your catcher's, you're only one left. Your infield and outfield are gone. Why not walk right over here, and they're in masks for eight hours? They go out the back door. They can finally take it off. They had to get on the bus at three fifteen today, they had to get their stuff, they had to organize the changing, and then they had to go. That takes fifteen minutes. We, we have some of the best fields in the county, grass fields, and they're right out our back door. I know they're not ours, did we make the high school mad and the high school said we can't use it anymore? Why not?
So I mean.
And it was a hundred and fifty degrees today, I probably smell, I am sorry. Because I was just out there. And there is not a shade tree one. My grandmother, I'll use her as an example, is on oxygen. She cannot walk from the parking lot to the seating area, there is no seating in the outfield. What we did last year, since we couldn't sit in the stands, is everybody sat in the outfield. I pulled my truck up to the fence, she sat in the air conditioning. And we're four hundred yards away compared to, you know, a mile, I think it's a mile.
We are fortunate to have good facilities right there and out there, so. I can talk about it with Jane, we had the invitation from the village to use the sports complex. Ultimately, it was my decision, I was the principal at the time when it came in. I wanted all of our kids to have an opportunity to be out there and play on those fields. A lot of our kids are on club teams. It's a great facility, I think it shows us off to the visiting teams when they're coming in. But you're right, it does make sense in some ways, also because there's nothing wrong with these fields, and we know that, so.
And they're practicing out here.
Yep.
Minus one day, I think one day a week, they go to the complex, which we have to bus them to that.
So I was also not aware the bus was staying there the whole time, in my opinion, dude, I need you.
The way that I understand it is.
I saw the bus leaving, the bus dropped him off and left.
Maybe that was another team.
The bus pulled in, dropped the kids off, and I actually followed him back here because I was going to the youth center, so I was behind the bus.
Well, how do the players get back if the bus didn't stay out there? Is it the parent's responsibility then to go out there? What if these kids don't have parents that can do it at that time? So then we're, we're sitting there fighting that again.
We have not had problems with softball, for sure.
You know.
And another thing, I will just say, I'm gonna be very careful on how I talk about this because I'm wearing both hats here, but when we play over here, you have to have a maintenance crew of one or two people get a field ready, ready for a game. Paint lines, drag, chalk lines. We are not fully staffed with that right now. Not saying we couldn't accomplish that, but it does make it easier on the recreation department if we don't have to drag, paint, and chalk lines.
So, so you have two people do that, we'll say. How many people does it take to move that mound? Two people.
That mound should be in place out there, but we have staff out there.
Andy, are you saying that it takes two people to rec employees to do that, or to RCS, is what you're saying?
Rec employees get the fields ready.
Oh, okay.
These are not our fields either out here, they're.
So, and the rec department, and I don't know, this is Mr. Humphrey, the rec department has in the past built the city schools for, for a little bit, not, you know, portion, just recruit some of the cost of materials. And I don't know if we are doing that this year, I have not seen that come across in the builds yet, so. I stay out of it, like I said, because I'm wearing two hats, so I don't ask about that, and that's between Dr. Woods and Mr. Humphrey, so. And we are working on an intergovernmental agreement at some point in time. Dr. Woods and the recreation department, we are going to hash it out for lots of different things that would include the facility, include wall bash, include other intermural tech sports, it's just, we gotta get through COVID before we do all that.
Alright, thank you, I mean, thank you for sharing, I wasn't viewing it, and I wasn't viewing the negatives in that way. So I appreciate you sharing that.
And the kids, you know, like Modo was saying, if a kid can't have his parent pick him up, that's a hell of a walk to, I live on Inglewood, that's a heck of a walk all the way to Inglewood.
It's just gonna discourage kids from going out, then we go run into that problem again. That was a problem you said that you had with trying to get kids interested in doing even rec ball.
I don't know that the bus is or is not staying, so I'm.
Alright, any other comments from the board? Okay. I'll just end on a couple of things, I'll touch on things, but to you as board members, just, just make sure we're getting into our board packets, because that's the only way we're gonna make things better, is if we really know what's going on, and we have, so just make sure we're pulling those up, and if you have any questions, please get with me and get with Dr. Woods beforehand, and I would just encourage everybody to get in there, and if we have anything that you want to put on the agenda or discussion, then please get with me, because I want this to be a working board. I want everybody to feel like they're a part, and the best way to do that is, is get into those board packets and look at every, everything and ask questions if you don't understand it. I'm not saying you have to ask them at the board meeting, you can call me, you can call Dr. Woods, and let's, let's really start diving into those if we can. And then I want, I will clog you on some more of the hiring practice, but I just want to touch base on that a little bit, because I feel very strong in this, I, it's kind of one of the things I ran for when I ran the first time, is talking about, I want our staff to look more like our student body, and I feel like the administration this past summer has done an extraordinary job, not only hiring the best people, but hiring a more diverse staff. I had the opportunity to come speak to the new hires and welcome them a couple of weeks ago, and that room did look different than years past. And so I, I think our admin has done an admirable job this year, looking at that. But I will, I will touch base with you and contact you on other things, but I think we are doing a good job, at number one, we want to hire the best people for the job, our kids deserve the best. But they also deserve to have individuals that look like them and come from the same background as them. So we need, we need to find a happy medium for both, and I think, I think our admin team has done that this year. So any other comments? If not, we'll be ready for a motion to move to closed session, our first closed session of this board. So somebody like to, we need to get down there so somebody could read it there, Hannah.
It just says motion to move to closed session.
But we have to state why we're going into closed session.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Good to know.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we're going into closed session for personnel and sale or lease of property. So I'll make that motion, I think there's some more legal terms we probably should have, but.
I think.
Okay, can we have a second?
I'll say.
Tyler, second. Okay, we are now in closed session.
We need to vote.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry. Yes.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Heavitt.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Mitch Wilson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
So we are gonna go into closed session for the public. We are not taking any action after closed session, so there's really nothing for you to stay to see. So I'm gonna suggest that we recess for about five minutes.
Stay in.
Assuming the public doesn't stay for the close. We leave and go to another room and you don't hear anything, so. What I'm saying is, the open meeting is over, so we'll recess for just a few minutes and let everyone, then we can just begin this.
Can you make sure the recording is?
I am gonna stop, yes.